Thirty and a half, so. All right, well, would you all join us for the uh?
Of the United States of America. For which stands one nation.
Time was off, Tom.
Totally had to sink, sorry.
All right, awesome, um, I'll call the uh, a slipboard to order for Wednesday, uh. September twenty fifth for a um, yeah, it's a workshop for strategic planning continuation of a couple of weeks ago. Um, did everybody get a chance to fill out the? The form and the and the grading and um, I was just uh. I don't want to speak for all of us, but um, when we get started, I I I like this format, I don't know what everybody else feels about it, but. It uh. I like it. I just say, I think it gives us a good, you know, it's it's a good format to work out for, so. I was coming earlier, you know, it would take us, if we sat down and went through each line item in a meeting, it might take a while, so.
Well, you you could have our discussions about each one of them.
Absolutely.
In fact, people have.
Yeah, you're right. So I think we should we should continue this one. Awesome, that's all I have to say.
I will say, I did thought I had created um, after um, Gabe and Emerson and I talked um, and added a column, just a comment column. Um, just in case anyone wanted to track comments as they were going through this night, I remember did not do that, but. The next one will do that, so in case, you know, you some of you might write it down, but it might just be there, I'll remember it.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, I saw that comment in there, but I didn't, I didn't scroll over far enough, I was on my tablet.
I put it in.
It wasn't in there.
Okay, um, yeah, thanks everyone once again for um, going through the scoring process and um, you know, bringing. Bringing your um conclusions, um, so we can, you know, formulate the. The uh, total scores and um, target years for prioritization of the of the strategies, um. Just before we like dive into our conversation and review. Looking ahead, um, we had scheduled so a meeting um, for our next review on October eighth. And in discussion, um, planning discussion, Andy and Emerson and I were wondering. Um, what your appetite would be for scoring the remaining, which is um, phase two and three together, but that's seventy one. Strategies, we can have it ready and sent to you. You know, probably Andy, we could do that, yeah, definitely by Friday. Is there willingness to do that? Okay, so if we do that and and um, review on the eighth, um. That will give us a little more time and flexibility, we have the meeting scheduled on the twenty second. Um, and I think we haven't quite, um.
Schedule on the twenty second?
Oh, did you schedule something on the twenty second? I don't know, is there something scheduled for the twenty second?
We were definitely gonna wait and see how today went.
Okay, very good.
We had uh, we booked uh, the twenty second if we were to do a fourth workshop, but if you wanted to do phases two and three and one workshop, eight.
Then we don't.
That changes our plan a little bit.
Okay, very good, very good, I wasn't sure if that was already on the books or not, okay.
Not that it matters, but I can't make the twenty second in.
Okay, okay, well then that's, that that works out then, cause that gives us more time to develop um. A draft roadmap for review, um, based on the the finals, the finals. Phases being scored by the eighth, so that works, so thank you, Tom, does that work for you as well?
The, what was the date again?
Oh, sorry, I'm I'm being confusing, um, the the initial question um, being. What, does it work for you if we score phase two and three together? Um, that's, okay, okay, very good.
I mean, the one of the reasons I uh, didn't want you to flash up the details, I can't see that well and it hurts if I try to cut to focus, okay? So, that's temporal, next time would be all right.
Okay, okay, very good, all right, well, thank you for that, that's that's really helpful, and so the next meeting on the eighth, we'll again, we'll review. Um, phase uh, two and three, there's only fifteen in three, um, and yeah, anyway, total of seventy one.
That's true.
Okay, great. Um, so, yeah, just looking ahead for to uh, for today and our conversation, um. Again, you know, we've allocated ninety minutes, like, we don't have to use all that time if we move through this uh, you know. Uh, faster than that, there's the three focus areas, housing, public facilities and services. And transportation, so, you know, we potentially could spend twenty minutes on each uh, area, but we certainly don't have to. Um, and we'll go through again, similar to what we did last time by focus area, starting with housing. Look at um, confirmation of um, the high rated priorities, which are, you know, the the short term. Years uh, one through three, and then we'll look at um, the the moderate or the midterm, um, years three through five. Um, and then we'll see if there's anything that um, is in the uh, the the lower scores. Um, in the five to ten year time horizon, and really just, you know, take comments. Um, you know, offer your feedback, thoughts, um, if there's any sort of dispute as to sort of where something belongs, we will, we'll talk that out. All right, are we all set to dive in? Okay. All right, very good, so housing, um, you know, we're looking at, there's a lot of uh, one to three and there's a lot of three to five, we don't see anything. Falling in the um, the low range as in um, five to ten years, so just, yeah, welcome your thoughts, feedbacks and comments.
It's not, I mean, much like the um, when we looked at like the economic development, you know, these kind of go hand in hand, so. It's not, you know, not surprising that we all kind of. It's a high priority, right? Um, and uh, it's 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 gonna be a little struggle, but I know we put, I think we all put a lot of stuff in the. One to three, cause it's seems like it has to happen, but, you know, it's. But my other, having been involved in sort of creating so many of these, um. Many of them aren't as weighty as others, some of them are fairly. Easier to accomplish, um, and don't involve as much in terms of just. Uh, if there's another call, maybe it maybe it falls into feasibility, but it's but it's kind of impact as well.
Yeah.
Um, and so.
I would add, I would add to that because feasibility is a lot to do with resources, both financial and personal. And when it comes to the personal resources, that's where, you know, Andy. Uh, it's got to sort of play a major role as to what's feasible for him to try to carry out, but. No, I agree a hundred percent, Dan.
Yeah. So, um, because I can tell you, there's some that are in the three to five that. I don't know, I I guess if we were gonna, we're not going to, but if we were gonna go and ad advocate advocate for specific ones. There there's a lot there.
Yeah.
So, and 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 if the goal is more housing, then. Then, then we need to talk about that, so. As opposed to just sort of taking, taking things off there, because they, I I would argue they aren't all of equal weight in that way.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
Would be helpful too, to have a better sense of like, when you get into like, the the metrics or like performance measurement, so to speak, like. How much by when? Is more, right, and we say more housing, I mean, we have to have that kind of, in internally, it'd be helpful to know. And then that would kind of guide, and it could be a hundred within ten years. Um, or it could be, you know, for us to be able to then balance and figure out like, whoa, is there, is there a development pattern that is? Better than others or worse, I mean, do we try and get all hundred in the quickest time possible? Yeah, because that's one big project, as opposed to waiting, you know, trying to find a more.
Right.
Balanced development.
Yeah, yeah, and, well, just to dive in a little bit, you know, I mean, but you think about scale and appropriateness for the community as well. You know, under unit development, it is probably not. Or, you know, I mean, Damar Scott has never seen anything like that.
And. Piper Mill gets completed as they envision the second phase of the apartment complex, they're gonna be at sixty units.
Yeah.
But they did it in like two chunks of thirty, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I thought it was thirty.
It is, the the second unit, but.
So you look at that one parcel, it's kind of stretched out now, a hundred in a vertical stack versus a hundred, you know, stretched out, I mean, I think that. So we get into these, you know, from Michael's perspective, planning and like, okay, what is, where does something like that go? Is it all in one place, do we say, oh my god, we can't have.
And we talked about about like, multi-family housing, you know. Well, ten, twelve units in a building, you know, everyone sort of cringed at a thirty unit apartment house kind of thing, but in one big block, but. You know, ten, twelve seem to be scalable to the town and people seem quite comfortable with that, so.
Yeah, you know, you know, you have an opportunity to shape what they look like, and I think, you know, Newcastle took a very different approach from what our ordinances are set up at, it was more of a. Forums like base where it's like, as long as it looks like this. Generally, or doesn't look like that, you know, we're kind of okay with with those things happening and. You know, is that something our ordinances should be, not that style entirely, but like, when we're looking at. Any type of development over a certain size, whether it's that skilled nursing facility or apartment buildings or something else, like, do we want to put more weight in? What it looks like, rather than restricting the exact number of units and let them be more creative with their design. Otherwise, they're gonna come in with the lowest cost option to put out, like most efficient one to put out, and we're probably gonna say.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You know, um, not to, not to railroad stop them, but it could potentially just. Cause them to be more creative and make it fit, and so we aren't left with this, oh, I wish they didn't do that.
So it looks more like a New England village than holiday and.
This north side of Main Street's another good example of that kind of sprawl feel where it was. Built kind of fast and cheap, maybe, where they're just simple boxes structures in one story and weren't built to be a hundred year structures.
Can I, can I uh, make a general comment? Uh, one of the frustrations I have when I went through it is, to me, al- almost everything was. A high priority, okay? Because it all came out of the strategic plan, so um, I agree with almost everything. The problem is that we can't do all that, so, and also, some things are prerequisite to other things. In other words, you gotta have the ordinance changes in order to do this or that. So, at some point, I think, when we get through agreeing on what the priorities are, we need to create a per chart. Or precedent chart, so that we know what has to come before, what has to go, and then, you know, all the way down the line. Because we we we've got a, you know, we have to plan this out for execution.
Thanks, Tom.
I think, Tom, you hit on it initially, um, you know, before that said a comment, um. You know, one of the things we'll do with with this group going through the remaining two phases in the next meeting. It'll create a little bit more time for staff to be able to see your thoughts, see your priority and rankings, and then for us to kind of be able to with them. From a person personnel resource perspective, um, say like, okay, these are doable with the current level. You know, some of the stuff might require consultants or additional staff, and it might not, but if it does, it's an opportunity to come back and you say. Okay, here's what we think we can fit in within the next three years with the resources we know of today. And then that gives you your kind of guiding light for the next couple budget years potentially.
Yeah, the only reason I say that is when I was going through and I said feasibility, everything was like. Oh, I love this, it should be done, feasibility, wait a minute. How much can they, how much can they do? It was the fee, I was torn between, is it feasible? And is it feasible for us, okay? So, may maybe my scores are relevant, I don't know on the feasibility side.
But you you you've got that important piece of the puzzle is the reality, like, we we can score it, you know, however we score it, but. Uh, we do have to dig into the the nitty gritty about what, you know, what do we, what's what are we capable of in-house doing? Do we have the capability and do we have the time to do it, or is it extra staffing and? You know, uh, I think so far we have, you know, four thousand ordinance changes for for Michael, there's all.
It's all ordinance stuff, so just, would you get it done and then we could move on?
Right. You know, and I know.
I figured that that it was gonna be a high priority, so I I've already started.
That's a key to a lot of it, right, you know, the order of how it works out.
Yeah.
Plan out, but the ordinances need to support that first, so we can actually.
And I can only imagine how frustrating it would be for the community to like, i- if we were to get. Uh, developers that are interested and and sort out financial issues and all of that, only to like, then to, oh, our our rules, our rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be maddening, so that's a huge key to the.
Yeah.
You know, making that work first, yeah.
I I also think, I was talking with Emerson earlier and she had mentioned that, um. The idea, I guess, the you had, you had discussed categorizing or kind of grouping some of these things together, because a lot of it. There there's plenty of stuff that fits in, ordinance changes or um, whatever else there is. Um, and I think that that also will help understand kind of like, well, what are we talking about? There's some stuff where it's like, we really need to do a lot of public engagement to do certain things. Ordinance changes, I mean, they should include public engagement, but a lot of the work really, the 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 time is gonna come in. Um, you know, sitting down and doing it.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, so I think that is is something that will. Help us under, wrap our heads around how much is this actually gonna take? Because some, you know, you look at this whole list and at least half of it really is part of one, maybe big project of one project.
Right, yeah.
And I think that once we get to a staff review, though, you know, hopefully, we will be able to say. Oh, here are projects that we can do, and if we had, you know, uh, uh. Multiple, multiple millions of dollars, we could get it all done, you know, next year, if we could go out and hire the right number of people, but. If we're gonna take ten years, like, which projects do we prioritize, which I imagine is the whole point of this, but. I I that's how I see a lot of this, is like, we're gonna have to stitch them together into one project, even if it is. The lowest, well, creating housing trust fund maybe isn't, but there might be someone that's low on here for three, five, it's like, we're already cracking this up and we may as well fix it, so. See how that goes.
Andrew, do you have any comments for you?
I'm good, and I agree that we have to kind of do ordinances first and land use before we can do anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any anybody else, anything else to add to the housing section?
I just have a question, I see that the um, create short-term rental ordinance and is is at the bottom, and I'm wondering if. How, do we, whatever his thought on short-term rentals are, because some communities see it as like, we need to do this, we have to address this. This is a huge issue for housing stock, I don't get that sense from the community necessarily.
Well, I don't know. You've talked to housing experts and and we and we spent a fair amount of time thinking about this community and researching. How many rental units have been taken off the market in 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 greater um, Damar Scotta? And it was alarming, hundreds of rental units are are Airbnb or. BRBO or whatever that is out, and.
Hundreds in this community?
Yes.
Well, but not just Damar Scotta.
Well, no, but in in this, but but in Damar Scotta, there's 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 a fair number.
Yeah.
Um, so if you go on a site and you say you want to visit Damar Scotta, you know, they'll bring up the area, but but you be. You know, maybe you won't be shocked by how many.
I'm a, I'm a shocking member.
It is.
I mean, I just, we didn't have more honestly than I've seen then.
I mean, I might have a lot more in the.
Bristol area, but.
Yeah, but there's these sites that um, that um, you know, that Michael and others had. That that actually tracked the number of um, units that are on the market, I forget what the name of that site was.
Well, they're. It's hard, some of this is like, they're they're.
Let me be a gadfly here, I have a rental unit and there's a couple on my street. And the bottom line is that, you know, you're not going to be able to force people to sell their units to. You know, to people who want to buy a household or a permanent resident. Uh, so, also, these units. Bring in a lot of the people that visit the area, I mean, there's, this is where they stay, they stay in these rental units. So they've got business in, I mean, it's good, good to have an inventory of them and, you know, a a small fee is probably feasible too, but you're not gonna eliminate these. Cause a lot of, a lot of these are for people's retirement, investment, whatever. And or, you know, having their grandchildren and children visit or whatever. But you're not gonna eliminate them, um, and you're not gonna be able to force people to sell them to other people.
No, no, and I don't think that was ever the intent, yeah, the the first, the first goal was just to find out how many there are and and it, you know. And by having a registration, and 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 it would be, and if you talk to the local police and the fire folks too, I mean. You, they don't know who's living where and how, and you know, if it, and if it's designated as a short-term rental thing, you can come at it from a public. Um, safety perspective as well, um, and and also, you know, if we find out there's only fifty. Units in Damar Scotta, that that's good to know, or if we find out there's a hundred and fifty, then that's good to know too, yeah, because it.
Well, I, as I said, I don't have a problem with the inventor, even a small fee, but um. I'm not sure what the long-term intent is, because if you're looking to create more housing. Through elimination of rentals, it's not gonna happen.
Well, I think two things, one, it, the thinking in in the committee was, is first, we have to understand what the extent of the issue is, because it's. It's it's a larger or smaller issue depending upon what community you're in. Um, and so this is one way to get at understanding the issue, and also it 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 checks off the box of public safety. The second thing is. The um, the funds that would be generated from from just this. You know, this uh, registration would actually be designated, the, this is what the thinking was, would be designated for. For a housing trust fund or a TIF kind of program, to be used designated just for um, helping fund uh, housing. New housing projects in the community, understanding that they're not necessarily gonna replace them, but. But clearly, they've taken units off the market and this is a way to to create new housing in the community. Whether it's affordable or 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 incentives for developers to come to town, and this gives us. Uh, pocket of money that would be able to be used for that purpose, and 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 you can, you can easily link the two. The the fact that, you know, this this is where these funds are coming from, and the purpose of it is to to figure out how to get more housing in the community.
So yeah, so yeah, the idea wasn't, when you guys workshop, it wasn't to like phase out.
No, right, I think that's the. And that was the clarification point, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm saying, saying thing, I, you know.
But the problem is, in some cases.
But I get it.
So, so lucrative, people have have just converted what used to be. Full-time rentals.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I I get it, cause it's, there's really good money, really good, really, yeah, but on the safety side of it, makes sense.
People that live in this community and this helps them to live in it versus people coming in and just. That don't live in the community and profiting from it. And which is taking away from helping our workers to have.
Oh, well, that that's a little different. Excuse me, sorry. My watch log just went off. Um, no, I mean, there are residents that have rental properties like me, okay, or there's a number on our street, they're full-time residents, been here. You know, many years. And then there are people, like you said, that are from out of state that have rental properties, and that's more prevalent usually in, you know, Booth Bay and maybe down. Bristol, but um, we'll find out when we get the inventory, but I think you're not gonna find as many. Uh, out of state people owning in Damar Scotta, they're just solely rent, uh, I think they're gonna be. Dual residencies where they come for half the year and then they rent the other half of the year, whatever. But um, you know, I I for one, I mean, happy to, you know, I pay a lot of taxes, cause I'm on the water, but I'm happy to pay. A, you know, reasonable fee for my rental property, but. Um, I don't think, and as I said before, I'm just repeating myself, I don't think those people that have rental properties. Are going to relinquish them, uh, you know, to. This is, if they want to sell them, they're gonna sell them, and they're gonna sell them to whoever is the highest bidder, but they're not gonna be forced to be able to sell them.
I I don't think.
It doesn't sound like that was what's happening.
Okay, right, right.
Tom, Tom, how much are you willing to pay, did you say?
Well, you know, I mean, like a lot of people, I have, the reason I bought my rental. Is because it's the only way I could get my kids and grandkids to visit, because when they visit, they don't have to pay rent.
Yeah.
So it it, you know, I help them with their air flight and whatever, and they're now, they're, they need a little help. And so I get to see them that way every year. And then the other times that it's available, I rent it out. And uh, it does sit idle mostly during the winter, but. It, the reason I bought it in the first place is to get my kids and grandkids out here.
Sounds like it's working.
That that's kind of why. That's why I asked, like, do you think it's an issue that we should, you know, how how significant of an issue do you think it is, because? Um. It it they exist, and I don't, and they're they're not necessarily, certainly not new to the area, I mean, people have been renting out houses for a week at a time. In mid-coast Maine, probably for, I don't know, last hundred years. Um, but like, but I it, I I think it's. Do, what I'm wondering is like, do we want to tackle that, is it significant of an enough of an issue that we tackle, or is it thorny enough that we're like, you know what? Maybe this first round, so obviously, everybody's got thoughts and and it's not, it's not a surprise to anybody.
Well, the other thing too, if we're if we're looking at, um. It would also tie into, you know, we've talked about business licensing and whatnot, so that's a whole nother subject, so if you. You know, if if you took this aside and looked at uh, short-term rental ordinances and and licensing, well, that's gonna tie into business licensing, so. It would, it would kind of, I guess, it would, it would give a few of that, so if we were looking. You know, I I I don't know how far, three to five years out on business licensing, we'll say, throw something out, it would, it would kind of go along those lines maybe too. I I I think it would be interesting to find out if there is a, I mean, if, I would, I could probably couldn't find the exact number, cause if something is not registered or. You know, but you could get a close, it'd be interesting to find out how many, um, for, you know, for with this exercise.
Have no problem with finding out an invent, getting an inventory, none.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I think this is a good example where. You know, all, again, based solely on a total of nine points, this fall not far below the first one to three years, but. Allocating resources to be able to accomplish is, I think this is a good example where, and. Unless we bring someone on or ask volunteers to go out collecting this data. Um, cause you can't solely find it just on, you know, there might be more, there is more out there than what people advertise through those sites, because it's word of mouth and. You know, the whole family that does stuff by word of mouth and has a general website to land that, but not showing up in short-term, but. We have a revale happening in within the next three years, and as I said to Michael, I think like that inventory part. Happens during the revale, they're going property to property, they should.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's a good idea. That'll save a lot of work.
I think the examples of Tom's situation being very different from those who have, um, you know. Tom now has an apartment above the garage, that used to just be a garage, um, and then now we might find ourselves down the road potentially of having stress septic systems. And now our community's got a bigger issue with water pollution, uh, well contaminated well, potentially, because some people, I think, it's relatively easy to convert space. Um, it's really easy to do it without us knowing about it, um, and. Many of you don't, not really thinking about their septic system. If the revale's able to have boots on the ground, already paying for them, artists wouldn't be capturing this, it just puts that squarely in that three to five years from now. Um, before we have the inventory, you know, or. Once we see the full scope of the the next workshop in all hundred sixty-eight where the fall, I think that's where it'll be interesting to kind of. Okay, now we have to prioritize, really prioritize, we're kind of doing this in these in these pieces.
That puts the feasibility up to three, if we agree that we can do it through the revale.
Right, yeah, it just pushes it off for a little bit if we're waiting for them to complete it. That but it's not gonna cost us extra, we started waiting a little.
Just, I I, this is not for Damar Scotta, I, cause I happen to have this for Newcastle, those looking at something. Whether this is relevant, and they've got a hundred and eighty vacant, according to the American Community Survey, they've got a hundred and eighty vacant units. And a hundred and fifty-four of those are, were identified as being vacant for seasonal recreation or occasional use, which. Would probably be a seasonal rental too, so, but it also could just be someone's summer home, right, that they they don't have to rent it out, but. That's a lot for of homes, vacant homes being. Just vacant for seasonal use basically, so. You know, that's that.
Considering they probably only have how many.
Nine hundred and eighteen.
That's gotta be a lot of waterfront, you know, that's a lot.
Yeah, I imagine, I imagine.
Like how many houses on there are rentals for weeks at a time? A lot of those are are.
Third, four season homes.
Yeah.
Yeah, camps, a lot of camps.
It's something to think about when we're looking at development projects, is there are places that might be really nice places to live for people who live. Live and work in the community but are not water views or not necessarily vacation spots. But there's just, there just are places where it's like, yeah, this is great that it's in town, somebody might want to vacation there, but if it's not. If it doesn't have those kind of amenities, it's not gonna be as attractive as a, as a uh, short-term rental, but it might be. Very attractive, or or at least livable for, you know, people in the community, so that's also just another. Very attractive or or at least livable for, you know, people in the community, so that's also just another.
And and um. The other thing we're onto too with with in specific with um short term rentals are traveling nurses. Um, that that I mean, they they're not coming up here for one year, two or three year lease, they they need a four month or six month stay, so that isn't important. Far for them too, uh, so we obviously a lot of them come through and get fuel and whatnot, and they're working for for miles, and they're up here for, you know, six months from Texas or something. And they want, all they need is a bedroom. Oh, or you know, a bedroom and a bathroom, and that's about it, and they're, because they're working, you know, sixteen hours a day or something, so.
Also, the seasonal, um, you know, restaurant workers, et cetera, I mean, a lot of them just come for the summer and then they go.
Yeah.
I think we've beaten this one to a pulp, though.
All right, thanks, everyone. All right, moving on, public facilities and services. And let's open it up to your thoughts and your comments on this one.
Well, I think we're making pretty good progress on the first one. Wow, honestly, I.
Well, yeah, we got them to do the work for us at no cost. That's fantastic.
Well, I see it, I see it scored pretty high, and actually made me worry after we did just make the investment, did we make, did we do it and change it and improve it in a way that? All these work. Yeah, I think that's the high score is reflective of what's happening now.
But yes, it's done. There was no.
Most likely the same with the second one, I think the second one with uh consistent communication and outreach, I I granted that in that it's. The processes are becoming much better, we've got different ways of communicating now, so I I wasn't so much of a like, hey, we need to work on this, it's a high priority. But it has been a high priority, and it's ongoing, so it's a core focus uh project for Emerson.
Give give me about two, three weeks, sometime, maybe I'm aiming for like early November, I'll probably present a white paper to you guys with the complete strategy. Or town communication, get that approved, so.
All right, check these two off. This is this is much better than the last comp plan, we actually have two things.
Well, well done, too.
We're we're three ahead from ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Yeah.
There's many, there's a couple, actually, there's only one C on there, but it's not, or the second C down, which is. Two thirds or halfway down, when making capital budget decisions, conduct a long term cost benefit plan, this is one, as it's scored. Again, it's another example of the other one I had mentioned, that as it's scored, it puts it in years three for five, three to five, but realistically. Every year we do capital budget proposals, and so assuming that's one that we probably will decide to implement a little bit soon. You know, we're doing ten year outlook on on expenditures, and so I guess it's a checkpoint of. Is that what was envisioned in what you think about? With the that with the comp plan, was it vision was a ten year outlook, or should it be a longer range? Um, and should it be a longer range only for, say. Facilities that should last.
Well, I forty fifty.
I think it was just to. From here going forward, we're going to, we should, anytime we make investments, we should be thinking about.
Right.
Resiliency in terms of just. Physical space, so. Any investment. It's not like, let's let's start thinking about that in five years, so.
No, yeah, I said against an ongoing.
One of those that runs up against resources, right, and so that's gonna cost add a little bit more cost, or not that much more on a big project, but acknowledging that. A little more time, a little more cost on those, those projects, and so anything that's like currently in the works. Already past the design phase, that hasn't been constructed yet, we say, well, we didn't quite look at it that way yet. Yeah, the PPI, the some of the other ones that are just earnest in the front end of the design, we can, yeah, say, hey, why don't we make sure we're looking at that?
Yeah, I mean, a good example is like that culvert down on the the Casner Creek under under Church Street, it's gonna be. Just built to withstand flooding, and and deluge just coming down over there, so.
They have a jump shot on that one?
Tom, did you have anything? Or public facilities and services, any comments?
Um, again, I don't have the detail in front of me, I put in my two cents uh in the rankings, but. Um, you know, there's a project going on now between us and Newcastle that, you know. Could change the way we do things, and it's not decided yet, so we'll see how that plays out.
Yeah, it, yeah, to to Tom's point, it it it's the. Right at the bottom of our list here, we've continued to explore options for regional delivery of local services. I mean, I don't know, when I think about that, that has huge potential for cost savings. Potentially, I mean, I'm saying probably, you know, over the long term, you know, and it even goes beyond. You know, just the public works, I mean, I think we've talked about code enforcement officers, if we if we thought through that as a. Group of communities, then, you know, because if everyone involved adopted move back, then you don't, and you'd have the same standard, and then you could have a. Code enforcement officer for three or four towns or even the county, so, I mean, that sort of thing, so. We seem to have another ongoing, one of the one of those ongoing processes as opportunities arise or as it fits to, you know, so.
Yeah.
How much you go out and seek it, or is it?
Yeah, and I even think about schools in that concept, is is can you even create even more efficiencies within the school district? I know it's not our bailiwick specifically, but we could certainly, we. Uh, it was helpful, advocate for three things, so. I know, um, kind of back on housing, but on that, like. I've had some conversations about. Like even housing trusts or land bank and things like that, but it's just not the scale the town can take on. But it's something that maybe either regional, county, you know, can happen, so I think that's also. You know, we was on on this list, the housing trust fund, we probably could have a housing trust fund. Uh, but also, a lot of this might happen at the county or regional.
Operationalized, run, whatever.
It seemed to be right between two housing.
Well, there's two housing authorities, please. What's the difference between a housing trust and housing authority?
I believe housing authority is essentially like of the government, part of. The government, and housing trust is like kind of a nonprofit, can be basically not public. But probably not pro, yeah, it would be, I mean, it would be not pro, yeah, yeah. Right, so.
But ti- ti- typically, the trust funds usually, the house trust funds help people to find homes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would. Not having one, I think we would, we could kind of define it, but the way I imagined it was, so at least with the TIF, was like, we're gonna take. Funds that we get, set it aside for hopefully. Um, expenditures that would kind would come back, so it could be like low interest loans or things like that, gap gap down financing for projects.
Yeah.
Um, which we can kick in maybe to a project that the housing trust fund pulls together or. You know, so we we could, we can have a housing trust fund, but I I also think like, when you have towns that are two thousand, eighteen hundred people, like. You get a community, the county together, and it's like, we got a county level starts to really make. Makes sense, because you could, you could dedicate a whole person to that.
Right.
Well, you know, with that, to have one person run a housing.
And then you're also buying against, you know, like the county level, right, track and pull pull from the same.
Yeah.
But whose priority wise, yeah, so.
That that's in fact another example of.
I don't know, I think we have, we have some uh. Significant opportunities, the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission identified three properties that. Were suitable for low income housing, and you know, the Mill Street. Project in Newcastle seems to be a big success. And I think it's full, you know, it's been filled up, or there's people waiting to get in there. So, um, like the TIF, we ought to be trying to find people interested in developing those properties in town. Just like they did on Mill, you know, Mill Street, um, for our own community, because we certainly have a demand. And uh, they've given us some guidance as to where the properties could be, so that should be a high priority to me.
I'll go back down to staff resources.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And what we can offer. In fact, I mean, I wanted to say, what do you call potential developer, hey, we'd love this city built here, hey, property owner, can you bring someone in to build, but. What tool do we have beyond making those conversations happen to be able to actually entice, because that's what.
That this gets into the the whole list of these priorities, we have to put them in a priority order, not all the same priorities. We obviously have to decide what's more important than the next, and they're all important, obviously, but. We have to be realistic as to what the most important are, and if we think housing is right up there in the top, which seems to be. Then we have to take that on with the limited resources we have.
Exactly what we're going through, what we're going through is, you get the next, you know, what was identified in phase two and three of the comp plan. And you might find some of those things do make more sense to bump up to a one to three, whether it's. Low resource commitment, easy to check off, or whether it makes sense in a progression of getting other things done. Um, for the select board, you're in it a little bit more than the comp plan committee is on a day to day operational level. So having you look at this and understanding the budget, understanding the community through a different lens. Um, you know, kind of helping guide me to help guide the staff through what you want to see done, so. There'll be, I think when we get through the next workshop. Again, that's where the staff will be able to kind of take a look at this list and kind of put a sense of, I want to say, reality on there, but to help. Get a guide for or guys for um the resources in term, like can we do this this year? Sure, what does next year look like? Great, here's what we'll need in order to help we, right, and kind of outline that budget, highlight that budget need for next year in a different. Way than we have.
Yeah, no, you you can't swallow an elephant, and uh, that's what we have here.
Right. So I mean, it'll be interesting, if you know, the first year in particular, we try to apply it to a budget sense, I think it'll be very interesting, but. When you can, if you can talk to the community about like, well, where are we going with this, what are we getting for this, it's like, well, here, here's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. You know, and then if they just, you know, if they don't find those applied enough value, then to point to come back and share that with the board, but. At least they know where we're headed, not just raising the money to raise the money, but the wages went up. There's a purpose here.
Are we ready to move ahead to the soul recreation?
Souls, yeah. Yeah. Okay, you're good.
My thought here quickly was, is that this is one where you you may be able to engage with a community partner. To help you on this one in particular, and that's, and I'm just thinking coastal. Yeah, because they do this kind of stuff, and 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 they already have some ideas that, you know, when you talk to them, they're they're pretty cool.
Yeah.
They're great, I guess, and so, and if the town partnered with them and however we could. Then that might be how you get at some of this.
And it could be as as opportunity arises, yeah, I think too, yeah, right.
And this is definitely a grant, grant fundable project.
Like just wrote down, it's like, if you wanted to see it completed in years three to five. We know that in years one to three, we're gonna be finding that partner, looking for the grant money, so that they have what they need to complete it within that three to five years. So I think, you know, as we go through this, it's 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 gonna be interesting to try and envision, I mean, the other one that came to mind. Um, we talked briefly about Dan was the um bike community designation. Pretty exactly what it was called in the comp plan, it's in the phase three, I think, of the comp plan. Um, but if you wait till year seven to ten, it's not when you're supposed to start it.
Right.
That was to be when it was to be. Probably gonna take seven years to get to the point where you come close to meeting all the metrics to be designated that, and so. That's gonna be our our one of our tasks or tricks, is try and figure out, yes, delivered in that year, but what do we got to do leading up to it? Um, and some of those things might be lost soon, then we realize, um, to start working.
Started on it now.
Tom, do you have a a comment?
Well, I I I find that the Coastal Rivers group is very cooperative and very supportive town initiatives. And I'm working with them on something else, but um, yeah, I think that. Um, there's a very good possibility with their sixteen hundred acres that they could find some space to. Work with us to create a park for the town. But this is, I'm I'm optimistic.
Yeah. And also, why is also, I think, a valuable partner in this, as far as recreation goes. Yeah, we're we're lucky we got. Quite a few oppo- options for partners here, so.
Yeah, and and not that I want to go back to housing, but I was thinking about Coastal Rivers, and it's just having had conversations with them over the years. They're very interested in housing as well, um, because they want to see that housing's.
Yeah.
In the, in the. Most appropriate.
Right.
Places.
In a very balanced approach.
Yeah, so no, they 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 understand there needs to be housing, and and that there's some places that it's more appropriate for than others.
Yeah, they've they've been one looking, looking areas that are more appropriate for that as opposed to conservation and stuff too, yeah, yeah, so.
Even parts of their property that would be better suited for housing than not.
Well, that's what Andy and Emerson and I just were over there having a conversation.
Yeah, 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 it's a part of that, yeah, well, I think they talked about it throughout through our presentation, yeah.
Anything else about the open spaces, that's where you can come. Moving on, um, our final category for tonight is transportation.
Well, having watched a couple of people walking down from the. School Street to Hannaford on the right side today. My first reaction was, are they gonna make it? Um, it it is, it's ridiculous, I mean. We we have to work with the state to get that that area, definitely, because there's a lot of people that walk there. I don't know why, but a lot of people go to Safeway as workers, they come down School Street, they turn the corner and they go to to Hannaford. Bags or whatever, but it is, it's ridiculous, I mean.
Yeah.
The fact that nobody's gotten hurt or killed is remarkable. Knock on wood.
Well, I imagine that will come up in the PPI.
That next year or the year after.
Um, it'll be over the next twelve to sixteen months, we'll be, we're doing the planning phases of it, the funding. Oh, and the funding together to, after we identify the design, we'd like to see implemented, it's gonna be probably the worst of it. Newcastle's in a similar boat with their DPI and intersection workover, you know, to the main street there, but. And always comes back to funding.
What's the match on that?
We don't know the cost yet.
Oh, right.
Um, but if you go and do it with the state, it's generally more like a fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Um, if you can get federal funds, great, now we're ten percent at the cost, um, as opposed to fifty percent, but I mean. You know, go through the first step, go through the planning effort, working with you to something that's on the. And why we did it, because the state wasn't gonna come in looking at sidewalks and bike lanes, and I need the extra stuff that we want to see as a community, so. We're joining that effort with them, so it is in the purview as they do the design. And how it gets funded and how soon it takes to build afterwards is solely on.
Yeah.
Us in a large way.
Yeah, and that's a priority for them.
And and coming through that particular, this particular section here with that causeway, I mean, that's a widening of that causeway to get a multi use lane in. I mean, that that's a big project. Working on that, but I think they're ignoring it.
We'll make, we'll make the select board walk that stretch there to get the priority up a little bit.
But not to mention, it's been, it's it's served as a dam several times in the last few years, not as a, just the causeway. They they that culvert backs up and then it becomes a dam, and it's not built as a dam, but the state's checked it a couple of times. It's fine. Okay, I know.
I feel like the ones that have to do that, one that's halfway down this list, um, publicized, just like ride sharing, again, another good example of like. That's a half an hour worth of work that could be done.
Kind of thing, right, as long as you know the groups, and it's just more of a policy of your website, like. Do we have guidance on what, because there's people at organizations that send us stuff periodically, hey, can you put our resources on your website? No, um you know, I mean, you know, what's our guidelines and where do we put it exactly? So it stays a relevant website, it doesn't get bogged down with all this extra stuff, and how do you run the balance of you're promoting one but not mine? I mean, the type chart, for example, why'd you pick this one, why aren't you using my type chart?
It's more or less a bracket.
Do we need to? In some ways, the hardest part goes back to like, what is our guardrails as staff to be able to know what is the board want on this website? Otherwise, that's a quick project, and I was generally waiting for years three to five of this resourcing this app. And so that, that's where we'll be able to kind of go through, like, oh, let's just get this done and keep it updated periodically. Yeah, so you have to figure out what 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 would you, you know, for community resources, you know, as opposed to, I mean. What 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 we would include on there, or if you'd link it to something, or yeah.
There are questions or thoughts on transportation, where things landed?
That's the second page.
Yeah, there's a, there's another page, yeah, yeah.
There's some site plan review, there's some more and stuff in there, right? You're not getting out of this. Man, the town's site plan review. Those ordinance wants pop right out. Yeah, it's just a lot of ordinance work with stuff, yeah.
Question is, is Mike the lion tamer or the lion?
Yeah, who's, I mean, you got to understand, like, are we, I'll say a full sale, but are you, are you tackling majority of this? Ordinance things collectively, so you can kind of see how they all come together and impact the other. In that, which case you're going to likely want to bring in someone to assist, if nothing else, Michael, in doing that. Because there's no time to do anything else with the resource, you know, the time available for, so, and a good example of, you know, how do we best do this? And maybe it is a matter of kind of triaging and and kind of, you know. Being planned and like, okay, we're going to go through a series over the next five years of ordinance updates. We are going to take the most prioritized, you know, needs now, maybe the housing focus first. Like, we want to make sure we can get this, this and this done and encourage these types of things immediately. Well, top like, yeah, economics and housing have been the two, the two big ones, so we tend to prioritize those of them. If I I I would assume in that process, there's going to be things that are going to kind of overlap, or as you clean things up, so you might, you might be picking something from. You know, completely different subject and all that, you know, we can clean that up and that can fit in here, we can, we can tighten it up, so um. Yeah, but yeah, it's really come down to, you know, somebody be able to look at it and say. Can I do these small chunks, or or is it all one section of an ordinance, or an all-site plan review?
Yeah, and I think one, one big division in some of this is. The kind of admin process stuff that doesn't, that will affect people and will streamline a process, but isn't, doesn't change. I mean, what anybody's allowed to do with their property, or what we are, aren't encouraging, it's kind of the machinery. And then I think that some of the bigger things of like, well, where we want to encourage development, what about housing, and like, that. We've got a good start in here, but I think that also requires a good amount of, uh, community conversations to say, what, what are you looking for? Yeah, what do we, you know, is this really what the community wants and will enact it? You know, where, how we review things in here and track things is. You know, it's relevant and it's obviously the people's business, but um it's probably less interesting and less. I don't, I don't imagine there'll be a lot of community conversation if we just come up with an efficient way of, you know, reviewing and issuing permits, so.
Right, yeah, so. Interesting, halfway down, the the one that talks about requiring sidewalks being maintained at the same or. Or about the same rate as roadways, it's interesting, given the exact conversation that the Public Works Committee is having. Service levels for doing public works.
Yeah.
And relatively significant difference between meeting that. And having, let's say, a standard level of service, which wouldn't put them at the same level. So if you can map that cost at least and make that decision.
Right, yeah.
Yes, I agree with that, and oh, service levels, okay, well, that can absolutely change, you know, it was a, a kind of a hard one to grade for me. Yeah, so different conversation.
But since we're having to do it, should help feed into this.
Now, she had your current contract saying what states without amending and changing that. But I think right now, what you do, we get is kind of that level at the moment. The conversations you're having and will be having about a two-town standard to be met now, now all of a sudden potentially becomes, do both towns agree with that state? Yeah, and sharing that department.
Other transportation thoughts, comments? Good?
Michael's over there just kind of ordinance, 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 ordinance.
Started doing that when, right when we were adopting the con plan, I don't remember where that, I don't think I ever got through.
How many do we have?
Well, with some of them, it's, you know. You know, updating it number here or there, so.
But some were serious.
Yeah, right, re- revisiting subdivision to encourage transportation connections and things, that that'll be a.
There's some big ones to to figure out outside the end, yeah, yeah, some of this cleanup and some of it's, you know.
Okay, so, well, thank you once again, the conversation, and um we're now at um, you know, phase two. And three, so um we'll make sure all those are coded and then ready to send out by Friday, okay? That sounds great, um and, you know, we talked a little bit, uh and Michael mentioned this kind of like. How the process that Andy and Emerson and I are developing of like, okay, now we have these like. From the select board's point of view, how these things are prioritized, what do we do to get to actually like implementing? And we've been talking a lot about that tonight, like, what does it take to implement um some of these strategies and, you know, how things are going to work together? Um so, yeah, we're, we're working on that process and like, um you know, how to bring. Things to to the staff in an efficient way, um get their feedback, and then sort of what the actual visual. Roadmap looks like from um the implementation perspective, and then also. Meaningful metrics and visuals for the community, so like really utilizing that ClearGov software. Both from both ends of things, like to actually, okay, how do we track and implement the strategic plan? And how does the community look at the progress of the comprehensive plan being implemented? So those are the things that we're working on with the goal of, you know, having a draft roadmap visual. For the one to three-year plan as what we'll be able to review um at the um next workshop that we have. Which I think we're looking at November twelfth, right, I think that was, Andy, we're we're still on on November twelfth.
Second, yeah, second.
Yeah, with the idea that we would um be sharing. The draft um with you, I think by the seventh of November, yeah.
So November twelfth, at, if five thirty is enough, the next strategic after October.
Yeah, November, uh November twelfth, at five thirty, yeah.
Starting to get into basketball season almost, I don't know.
In in your next steps, are you uh trying to. Uh estimate the man-hours and the types of personnel and skills that are required to do each of these tests?
Yeah, exactly, so we're, we're really looking, I'll tell you some of the things, like, so we're, we're trying to view things, and obviously. What Andy, Emerson and I are going to come up with is going to be, you know, only so far, and that's why things need to be taken to the staff and likely. You know, other folks as well would need to weigh in, you know, maybe folks, I was thinking, maybe Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission folks, you know, some. Things that involve like outside of necessarily the town's purview, because we've talked a lot about that, like what could happen at the regional level? What other resources are available, so like looking at what, what tasks are involved, and I know that. Um Megan did some of this um when she was here over the summer, just like really looking at the strategies from a task perspective. Like, how do you break something down, but really like, what's the task, what's the timeline, what are some milestones? Like you said, like, how many, by when, when we're looking at housing, like, what are those milestones, and then certainly, yes. What are we talking about, is this a, is this a, something that happens like on a weekly basis, ongoing? Is this a project that requires eight hundred hours, like, what do, what do things look like? And there may be things we don't know until we get more information. Um and, but really looking at capacity, looking at partners, looking at, you know, is there someone on staff that can be responsible for this? Is willing and able to be responsible for it, um where, where we can find additional capacity, um funding certainly. You know, what outside funding is potentially available for something, and then also again, like, we talked about, like, what, how do you show success? Like, how, how do you know something has been either accomplished or is being accomplished? Um so, we're gonna, we're starting, we're starting those conversations on Monday, yeah, so, um. Yeah, and like, obviously, we're, we're just setting up, you know, a baseline with our, our best thinking that we can then take to. You know, others that are going to have a better insight on, okay, on the ground, this looks like.
I'm afraid you're going to come up with the need for five uh Michaels and five. Running for the next five years consecutively.
Right, this, but Tom, that's exactly, you know, the, I think that's spot on, because that's the point, we're trying to see like, in reality, we're taking this giant vision. And saying, okay, how do you implement this vision, what does it actually look like to implement this? And even then, I mean, we all know this, you, you set out to do a project, and you have a, you have a roadmap, you've got a plan. Here are the steps, this is what I'm going to do, does it ever really go that way? You know, it, it, so it's, it's a map, right, it's a map, and but it gives you, it gives you some guidance. And if, if there's someone on staff that's going to implement it, they can take that information, like, okay, I'm going to break this down further. I need to create a work plan to actually get this done, because, oh, the timeline is, you know, by next December, I'm going to work backwards. Uh I know these are my milestones, I need to show when these things have been accomplished, so we're, we're, we're just trying to keep, you know, breaking it down. So um, yeah, that's where we're headed, and we'll, we'll start those conversations on Monday.
Well, I assume we're not reinventing the wheel, either, that all towns do this, they all have.
We're not reinventing.
Implement them.
We're not.
I mean, the dammer shot never had, this is the first time, we've, we've had con plans, and this has never been, it hasn't been implemented peacefully or whatnot. This is the first time for us.
You've had annual work plans that were typically done after the budget process. And I think that's one of my things, like, I'd rather have a sense going into the budget, like, why, you know, when a department has like, well, what does the board want me to do? You know, build a budget for the next twelve months, but eighteen, you know, up to eighteen months in advance, but like, what am I trying to accomplish? We can continue to come in and do what we do, but is there a bigger vision, goal, plan, where are we headed, and I think that says it. Kind of see where we're headed, and it might be, you don't get the support at town meeting, but hey, guess what? The groundwork, all the hard work's been done, all at that point, you're like basically just taking it off the menu. Right, we didn't get what we needed, so that's fine, we know how to prioritize within that, to say, these five things, not these eight things will get done this year.
Well, you know, I, I think you've got a very important point there, Andy, and that is, there's a tremendous P R opportunity here with the community. To tell them how we're meshing the two together, um you know, the strategic plan and an implementation plan. And showing them the reality of the resources we have and what we can do. And let them opine on it, and you know, if they're not happy, maybe we increase uh resources and whatever. But I think by, you know, disclosing the reality of this is going to be a big plus for the, for the, for the town.
I mean, for what it's worth, I'm coming from a community who ten years ago were developing their comprehensive plan, updating it drastically for the first time. Similar story, and decided to put together a strategic plan as well in duality with it, and do the piecemeal implementation, and um. It, it changed the P R perspective drastically, and it gave people a way to see the progress and to have a sense of that community pride. And that increased civic participation tenfold, and increased trust in that community tenfold. And then they, it was up for, uh, the the ten years was up, uh, about a year and a half ago, they decided to do it again. And have already surpassed the number of folks that they engaged with, was like four thousand the last time, they've already surpassed it.
Andy would be exhausted by then, though, I think. After ten years, he's going to say, not again.
So any, anything else um from the perspective, um you know, for the last scoring sheet, any? And Andy's going to add a comments um uh column in case folks want to jot down notes as they're going. But anything else at this stage that you want to change in the?
No, I think.
Oh, I like the problem.
I I would have loved a column for impact.
Impact.
But I don't know.
How's that measured?
I don't know how you measure it. Really big, really big deal, kind of a big deal, sort of a big.
Impact in which way, like impacts traffic, we can't afford more traffic, or impacts like the community, like for the better? Like, how, how do you?
Yeah, yeah, I think you're probably thinking like on the positive side of it, like, does it affect smaller, right? Yeah, is this a real?
Yeah, I, I, I get it, and yeah, it'd be hard, I don't know, I don't know how you do it, but. Another one to think about, while we're looking at staff, you know, you guys, folks go to the staff stuff too, and like, looking at the cost side of it, it says, do we have the tools? In-house, do we, other, do we need other programs, do we have other tools that we may need to purchase, or, you know, to make this stuff happen, you know, like. I mean, we talked about different, different things before, but maybe to a point where like, okay, we don't have the capability in the planning department, we need this program to do this. And make everything come together, so um that's going to be an important part of it too, where.
Which is why, because Emerson's done it already, she will have a little perspective on it.
I think that is very generous. Um I certainly have materials, and I certainly have examples and flow charts and spreadsheets and things, and I, I know. Folks who I could get on, I could get them on the phone, get them on a Zoom call here, who'd be more than happy to talk at length about it. Um but, yeah, I, 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 I will offer what I can, uh, and that is a little.
All I heard, you said a ten percent increase, guaranteed increase.
For your money back.
I did not say the word guarantee.
Any final comments before official adjournment, yeah?
Question, um so in two weeks, do the last session on this, and then it goes to staff. For review and discussion, and then I think you mentioned November twelfth. Is the unveiling kind of of the strategic plan publicly, is that right?
Draft form.
A draft, more of a, it's continuing, kind of follow up now that the staff have had a chance, I mean, I kind of would imagine that the staff are able to review. Say, here's, here's our pinch points, here's our resource limitations, the board then has an opportunity to look at it again and say like, okay. I'm assuming there's going to be the need to prioritize it through a different lens at that point. And you know, part of what it is, is the next six months in this current fiscal year, what can we get done? What else we can do, and then you're setting up the team, that's the next budget, you're cycle to say, okay, here's what we know we have to advocate for. Anyways, wait to see if it gets approved.
Book gets approved.
Right, yeah.
Question, I don't know if those. And we're, you know, we are still like.
Yeah.
It's evolving. Okay, I think from the, yeah, workshop perspective, it sounds like we're, we're good.
Great, yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
That was the only thing on our agenda.
Yeah, I took a, I took a pill to help my focus, but it also.